Okay, it's six o'clock. If everybody can stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, has everybody had a chance to look at the agenda? I don't believe there are any additions.
I motion to approve this evening's agenda.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have an agenda. Next is Superintendent's report, Mr. Jesse.
Good evening. Thank you Board President Wielander, other Board Directors, student representatives, staff, and community members. Lots of visits in the last week, so here we go. Today, I was accompanied by Board President Wielander at OBJH. Able to walk around, super impressive to watch the staff connecting with students. Trying to manage in like, you know, fourteen-year-old energy is not always so easy to wrestle with that. And I really saw a number of staff really connecting with the students, both from a relationship side, but actually also from having expectations. So we call it the warm demander. It was on full display at OBJH. And it was really nice when we walked in, zero students in the hallways. Got into a couple classrooms, stayed for a while in some, and just able to watch some really powerful instruction. I do want to give a special shout out for some staff that I thought were doing an exceptional job for a warm demander. We have a parent educator named DT. He's been around for a long time, been wrestling those hallways for a lot of things. I appreciate DT. Kristen Pingel and Ms. Deatt was also there helping to direct them. They were teaming up. Actually, Ms. Pingel and Ms. Deatt were teaming up on helping a number of students who were totally calm, but just high energy. And so it was kind of a fun thing to watch the magic happen. Last week, I was in the elementary schools in all mess. The one thing that I thought the theme was across the classrooms that I was able to visit was just teaching, straight-up teaching. They were modeling their private logic as they were instructing the students around some explicit elements of literacy that come from our units of study and the state standards. And so every one of the classrooms that I was able to visit, I saw definitely teachers teaching explicit skills right there and students practicing those skills on the spot. Last week, I also met with some of the teacher leaders from the elementaries. They were having powerful conversations regarding conferring. So for those people out there listening that are unfamiliar with that term, it really is an ability to meet with a student and engage with them around goal-setting, what are some of their general study habits around literacy, their engagement with literacy, the book itself, and the skills that they're trying to work on. You're able to have an opportunity to kind of teach in the moment and then set up a next step with those students. They also talked about Just Write Books and the art and science of it. I won't get into all of those things. Sounds easy, but it's not. And then just updating, they were doing a lot of work around the standards-based units and planning this through. And they were very efficient, very independent. I know this district, the Shelton School District, has come a long way when we have teacher leaders being able to literally design standards-based units that are complex. So awesome. Thank you so much for those teacher leaders. I always enjoy hanging out with them and learning myself. Lastly, I was at a community event last week. And it was a number of folks there, but we also had a senior from Shelton High School that was amongst the crowd. He was engaging and was part of the group. I know Clinton Sherman was there too. What a pleasant surprise. Sometimes you come around the corner and you just run into one of our students who was extremely articulate. But he also has a story. And he has not always been in the Shelton School District. He came to us, I believe, along his story, somewhere around the middle grades. And he was really talking about, he hadn't moved around a lot, so some mobility. And he said, you know, my last couple districts, I didn't really have access. The expectations for me were really low. In fact, actually, many of them said they didn't think I was going to graduate from high school. And I also was punished a lot. I received a lot of discipline. I don't think it was just. I have, you know, I have a lot of extra abundance of energy. And also just had a hard time just really engaging and learning until I got to the Shelton School District. And this student said, it wasn't perfect to begin with. He was adjusting because he had been moved many times. But once he got on track, he realized that educators, especially at Shelton High School, were really committed to his learning. And he was so appreciative of all the things that he had been provided, especially through the pathways, especially for the rigor, and the people really willing to teach him. And I thought that was profound. And so he thought he was really lucky. Little did he know that I also felt I was lucky that day to meet him and to hear his story. I forget the young gentleman's name. If I swear I saw him, I would totally know him because he was that, he was definitely that memorable. So with that, I'm really glad we get to hear about SHS today. A lot of good things going on. So with that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Good stuff. Okay, on to item number four, the public hearing on proposed 2025-26 Capital Budget Fund Budget, or Capital Projects Fund Budget Extension. Mr. Sherman.
Great. Good evening. This is another mechanism of accounting. So we had the water damage at Shelton High over at last, with that flood. And insurance sent us the check for the half a million dollars to pay out to the contractor that did the work and didn't pay them directly. And so we received that check in, but we didn't account for an extra half a million dollars of revenue in that expense. So it's really just flowing through the insurance check that came in. That's why we didn't plan for that expense in the Capital Projects Fund. And that's that half a million dollar. It's like four hundred and eighty-nine, yeah, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand. So it was just a flow-through check from insurance to pay off the reconstruction and the finished work for the high school. What questions do you have for me?
Any questions? Okay. No, it's a standard practice that you end up doing. It's an audit-proof deal. And okay, super. Thanks. On to item number five, Community Comments. As part of the regular school board meeting, the board welcomes community members to make public comments in person and/or by phone as conditions allow. Please see the full script with call-in instructions and guidelines for community comments displayed on the screen above. And we have one tonight, Emily Elliott.
Hello. Mountain View wants to extend our heartfelt gratitude to the many community members who supported our giving tree this year. Your generosity provided meaningful gifts to our students and families, and your generous donations will ensure that they enjoy an amazing holiday season. We truly could not do this without our incredible support of the Shelton community. Your kindness reminds us of what it means to care for one another, and we are gratefully thankful.
Thank you. Okay, on to item number 6.01, the Shelton High School's School Improvement Plan. Mr. Kipper.
Good evening. Chairman Wielander, members of the board, Superintendent Jesse. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to present our school improvement plan to the governing board and everybody out in TV land. And so I brought some people to help me tonight, and I'll introduce them as they have their opportunity to speak. I thought it would be a little more enlightening to have a staff, have some staff members and some students speak on behalf of the work that we're doing, rather than me just standing up here and joining on. So hopefully, they'll be able to provide some insight on, as I always like to say, a closer look at what's really happening at Shelton High School. So first off, just kind of a picture of who we are. We've got just a little over fourteen hundred students. About a hundred of those are in running start, and they attend various amounts of time during the school day. Some of them are full-time running starts. Some of them take a couple of classes with us. So we are somewhere in the mid-thirteen hundreds for like full-time students on campus. Thirty-six percent of our population qualifies for free and reduced lunch. And then we've got just under twenty percent of our population is English language learners. Just a little over ten percent students with disabilities. And four percent of our population qualifies for high cap. So looking back at last year, we do set what I would consider to be pretty lofty goals in trying to move our students. I like to say that, you know, if you don't set something that's pretty challenging, you're probably not going to make much movement at all. So we try to increase our goals and move our students a fair amount. If you look at, one of our goals last year was our freshman success goal. And, you know, we ended the year, the year before, just under eighty percent of our ninth graders earning six or more credits. And last year, we ended up just slightly under that at seventy-eight. And, you know, we have a number of challenges that we face. We have a number of strategies that we use. But what I like to do is look a little bit deeper into those numbers. As everybody knows, attendance plays a huge factor in students doing well in school. And when you break that number down even more, and you look at the students that attend eighty percent or more of their classes. So in a school year, a hundred and eighty days, that's thirty-six absences still. That's quite a few absences. But even students that attend eighty percent or more, that number jumps from seventy-eight percent to ninety-two percent. So ninety-two percent of our freshmen that attended eighty percent or more of their classes earned six-plus credits. So our challenge is getting more kids in class. And that's why when you see this year's goal, you see that we're going all in on attendance strategies. The other goal we had last year was looking at some discipline measures and trying to reduce the number of days our students are out of school when we do have to suspend them. And the year before, about fifty percent of our exclusions, students missed more, six or more days. So our goal was to try to decrease that to twenty percent. And we got below that number at sixteen percent. So sixteen percent of our students that faced an exclusion were out six or more days. So we significantly decreased that number. If you look at this year, looking at our, we went all in on attendance. We met with our staff before school. We have what we call our Climber University. And we looked at what can we affect, what do we have control over? And one thing we felt like we had control over was making sure that all of our teachers implemented the the characteristics and the elements of PBIS, which simply means making sure kids feel comfortable coming to class, make them feel welcome. As Mr. Jesse likes to say, knowing their stories, strengths, and needs. If a teacher knows that with a student, they can make a connection with them. And so we've worked really hard on developing some school-wide structures and routines for our staff members and our teachers in particular to help students feel welcome and to give them some voice in class and feel like, and trying to build their ownership. So they feel like, I need to be in that class. Another thing that we implemented this year was making sure that our teachers were monitoring their students' attendance and making phone calls when a student missed. When a student got to their three unexcused absences, that teachers were calling home and making contact and connection with families. The research is clear that it does matter who calls a parent when a student is absent. I can call, our attendance secretary can call. It does not carry the same weight as when the teacher calls. And when a teacher calls and presents it as, hey, we missed your student in class. Your student contributes when they're here. We enjoy having them in class. That goes a long ways with parents and teaming with us and partnering with us to make sure their students are attending class on a regular basis. Another thing we did was we really focused on, excuse me, when students do miss class and they miss what I would consider a significant amount of time, like three days in a row, that our teachers are conferring face-to-face with the student. We do have a school-wide commitment with our teachers that in the room, in their classrooms, will be posted the procedure for students to get makeup work. So it's no longer like, oh, go check Canvas. It's like there are protocols on each, in each classroom that state, here's the process you use to make sure you get your homework. But we want those teachers to go a step further and actually meet one-on-one with the student. We call it conferring. We borrowed that from the LA work. And we want our teachers conferring with our students on, hey, is everything okay? Is there anything I can help you with? Do you need support? Do you remember how to get your homework? So that they're having that connection with the student. And if you look at this, there's some really interesting data if you dig a little bit deeper into this. So we have about, like I said, right around fourteen hundred students or whatever. And our goal is to increase the percentage of students that are attending ninety percent or more of the time. And if you look at the numbers, last year, this was staggering to me. So last year, twenty-five percent of our students attended ninety percent or more of the time. That seems pretty low to me. This year, after first trimester, it was up to forty-five percent. So the work that our teachers and our staff are doing is working. More students are attending ninety percent or more of the time. Our two focus groups in this area are our freshmen and our seniors. And if you look at seniors last year, if you look at the entire year, ten percent of our seniors, that's, I didn't, ten percent, attended ninety percent or more of the classes. This year, after the first trimester, is forty percent. And our freshmen were at twenty-six percent last year. And after first trimester, they were at forty-eight percent. So the work that our teachers and our staff are doing is working. More students are attending more of the time. Our second goal for this year is still our freshman success goal. It's where we feel like we can make the biggest impact with our students. Making sure that they get off to a good start their freshman year and are earning credits and working towards graduation creates an easier path going forward than having to make up credits as they go through high school. So again, we're trying to make that ten percent jump. That's pretty lofty. That's moving a lot of kids. But it's where we get our biggest, it's where we get our biggest bang for our buck. And the strategies that we're using, these are, we have many strategies, but these are kind of the four that stick out. One is we still are implementing our frequent, every three weeks, a family gets a progress report or a grade report. So we don't go very long without notifying our families on how their child is doing. Included in that is, again, our commitment to making sure students know how to get their makeup work and how that process goes and assuring that our students are getting caught up. And part of that is determining what work needs to be made up. Sometimes not everything has to be made up. Sometimes some things are more important than others. We want to get that student caught up and get them back on the track with the regular class. Also, really doubling down on our MTSS process and, you know, getting our staff involved in that, having teachers, getting some student voice even, making sure that we're meeting on a regular basis. And we're really diving in to our data and looking at our numbers and looking at which students can we move and how do we move them? What are our strategies that work? Which ones are proven not to work? And let's move on and develop some new strategies. But again, it just comes down to constantly looking at the data and then doing something with it. Because anybody can look at the data. It's doing something with it that is the hard part. And then our freshman seminar class, you're going to hear some really detailed information about freshman seminar. You're going to hear from a couple other staff members. You're going to hear from one of our students about the impact that freshman seminars had since we implemented it. This year, seniors are the only students at school that didn't have freshman seminar. So our juniors were the first year, sophomores, and now our freshmen this year. So this is our third year of having it. And then we're really working on, kind of focusing on our Algebra I class. This is my thirty-eighth year in education. And all thirty-eight years, every year, algebra is the most failed class of any school I've worked at. When you look at the maturity level of the student and you look at the content and the curriculum, it is a very difficult course. It's probably the most difficult course we offer. And so we're really trying to look at, are we aligned in our curriculum? Are our teachers aligned in their strategies? And what can we do to develop some effective strategies to make sure more kids pass algebra the first time they take it? And if you look at our, so if you look at our freshman data from this year after the first trimester, again, we're right at about seventy-eight percent of this year's freshmen earned two credits. Because if they earn two credits each trimester, they'll get to their six. So about seventy-eight percent of our freshmen earned two credits first trimester. If you break that down and you look at the students that attended eighty percent or more of the time, it was ninety-one percent. So any parents out in TV land, please, I cannot stress the importance of having your child attend school on a regular basis. It is the number one factor in making sure that they achieve academically. So now I'm going to turn it over to some of my colleagues here. So we have Brandy Redinger. She's one of our assistant principals that oversees our freshman class and works with our freshman academy teachers and our seminar teachers. We have Katie Schrum. She's one of our seminar teachers. Katie teaches four classes of seminar all day, every day. Four classes of freshmen, and she volunteered to do it. So, and then we have one of our students, Lalo Hernandez Mendoza, is here to talk about his experience in freshman seminar. He's a sophomore this year. One of our most articulate students we have. He's really involved. He's been in our leadership class. And we also have, I don't want to leave out, we have Ms. Stray here. She's one of our other assistant principals. And Mr. Stewart is hiding over there in the corner. He's another one of our assistant principals. I appreciate all the support and their hard work. They're really what makes it go. And so I appreciate them every day when they come and do the very best they can. So who's going to go first? Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Schrum.
I hope not. Hi, thank you so much. I'm Katie Schrum. And yes, I am one of our four freshman seminar teachers. I have been fortunate to get to teach all three years of seminar. And truly, like freshmen are my favorite to teach. They are amazing. Some of the things that we do in freshman seminar, we actually start before school starts in August because we do our freshman orientation. And it is a dedicated time for our freshmen to come on campus as only that class. They get to learn where their classes are. They get to learn about their advisory. They actually get to meet their advisory teacher and their seminar teacher, learn where everything is. We do mock bell schedules and such, but it's a really great way for them to learn about campus and before that first day of school. Freshman seminar is a two-trimester class. And it really helps us build our foundational skills and academic, social, and personal skills for our freshman class. Some of the things that we do cover is some career assessments through U-Scienc. U-Scienc is a program that we actually, as a district, use for our high school and beyond plan. And fortunately, our freshmen actually get to start doing that high school and beyond plan their freshman year with a career assessment, which is an amazing process. It allows our students to, through a series of brain games, connect to their own attributes and learn about what careers they might be really good at while just still exploring. And which actually sets them up for visiting their academies, which I know Brandy's going to share with you as well. And some of the skills that we do teach in seminar, we teach about time management, prioritizing and planning because they're coming into a new school. And we teach the importance of earning their credits because they're coming from junior high where those classes may not have counted as much. And they're learning about that importance of earning their credits. And so prioritizing their tasks and learning how to use planners and calendars is really important for them. We do study skills as well, the importance of taking notes and staying on top of their assignments. We talk about communication, not only verbal, but also written when they're learning how to email their teachers and not putting that entire email in the subject line. You're welcome to anybody that is going to receive an email from a student. But it's really important that they're able to have that communication because when I have a student that comes to me and says, hey, I need to talk to this teacher. And I said, well, they have a class going on right now. Let's open up your Chromebook. Let's open up your email. And let's email them and talk so that they can get back to you. And so that's a really important way of doing that communication. We talk about goal-setting. We talk about what they want to do. In fact, just last week, we did a trimester two goal-setting so they could look at their trimester one grades, look at what they need to do for trimester two to continue that success. And we also talk about organization, not only of their personal backpacks and such, but also of the things that they do in their everyday life. When they're getting to class, organizing that, making sure that they're on time and present to all of those classes and such. In addition to those skills in class, we also talk about teamwork. We talk about collaboration. But freshman seminar really gives our students those tools to help them be successful in high school. We've seen the data start to increase and their success really improve. And having taught this class for three years, I just absolutely love watching the growth in all of them. And it's been so amazing looking at our junior class now, which was our very first freshman seminar class, and seeing their success and seeing their involvement and has just been empowering. Not only to us, but then we've been bringing those students back into the classroom. And they're also talking to our current freshmen, and then they're learning about that as well. But it really just gives our whole High Climber Academy and our whole High Climber community that success. And we're all growing together. So it's really been a fun process. And I know that Brandy's going to share with you some things about our academies and the connections that our freshmen are making to that. Do we want to do questions now or wait till the end? Okay, awesome. Thank you so much.
Hi, good evening. I am Brandy Redinger. I am the ninth grade assistant principal, which means I also get to be the assistant principal of the High Climber Academy. Since we operate on an academy model over at Shelton High School, all of our freshmen that enter SHS are in our High Climber Academy. And this academy really is designed to build a good, solid foundation for our students as they move through their high school career and then out in the work field, college, whatever their choice may be behind the high school. We're supposed to be on the next slide. We're having technical difficulties. Here we go. Okay, so the High Climber Academy starts really with exploration. Katie already mentioned the U-Scienc that all of our students in the High Climber Academy take to kind of build on those career skills that they would have the skills to provide in the future. But it also looks at the elective courses that our students can take at Shelton High School. So every Friday, our freshmen participate in Fun Fridays where our elective teachers, such as the fine arts, PE, all the different areas, come and elect student leaders to come into the freshman classroom and kind of give hands-on exploration activities about what those classes are about. So for like metal arts, we had some student leaders who came in and helped them make like little metal hearts and bookmarks and stuff. So it's a really fun way for our freshmen to know what the classes they're signing up for actually is versus just picking, oh, this one sounds neat. It really gives them that foundation of, here's what I'm going to learn in here. Here's how that would help me in my career path. Students also are able to participate in some academy explorations. So our Natural Science Academy and our Health Science Academy both had skills fairs. So it was set up in rotations where some of our industry partners had booths, either informational or hands-on exploration, as well as our student leaders in those academies also did some booths. And it was a great way for the students to kind of see what their academy choice would lead to in the future. Went over really well, a lot of success. We plan on continuing that because it really helped to bridge the gap between, here's what I'm learning my freshman year and what we're going to do outside of school. Because what the choices they make now is important to where they go down the road. The Business, Finance, and Hospitality Academy Exploration is coming up in January. And that one's a really neat one, if you have a chance to come observe, because it is our version of Shark Tank. We had to change the name since, you know, it's copyrighted. So it will be Orchid Tank this year. But students actually come up with an idea. They collaborate to work on the marketing technique. And they actually present their ideas to business partners. And it's a really neat way for the students to get involved and also showcase some really good ideas that could potentially be something in the future. And then at the end, towards the end of the second trimester, all freshmen- all freshmen then make their academy declarations. So they've had all these experiences that lead to that culmination of, okay, here's the academy I want to enroll in. And then that kind of leads their path so that they can take classes in their pathway to make sure that they're on track to graduate in that pathway and that they're prepared to enter the workforce or college, whatever their life choices would be after us. So our academies is great at preparing them for that. And now, I will turn it over to the man everybody's wanted to hear from, Lalo.
Good evening. I hope you guys don't mind. I have my notes on my phone. So, I'm just here to talk to you a little about our freshman academy, being a sophomore who attended, sorry, freshman seminar, who attended the freshman seminar. I have four topics that I'd like to go over. Social, academic, opportunity, and the growth of the program. So going into high school, we come from all different schools. And so, having a place where it's all just a clean sheet, where everyone comes together, there's a lot of teamwork opportunities where you guys have to collab with your classmates. There are also some lessons that are important and deal with matured topics that ensure students build a maturity expected from high school students. So some of these can be like awareness of healthy or unhealthy relationships, how to be a kind student or human just in general. And often can include professionalism, where we have a ton of emails on, a ton of lessons on how to write professional emails, how to talk in front of people professionally, and just interacting with others. I know we had this fun activity where we had to do handshakes and introduce each other to kind of just practice that interaction. The second one is academic. So, in my experience, freshman seminar's goal is to help students get used to and explore high school. So freshman seminar teachers kind of serve as a second or other academic advisor. A lot of students are unaware or unsure of how the credits and the classes work at high school since it's their first year. And so, that confusion can be asked to the teachers and they will give you guidance on that. I know I had a lot of confusion on how credits work, especially when it came to PE, science, math. I didn't know there was all different types. So having them was a really good guide. And their overall goal and their intention is to help the student pick the classes that are in their best interest. As you know, we have a lot of opportunities and activities to help the students explore what type of classes they would like to go into into the future. So a lot of that has to go with natural scientists, natural resources, engineering, which is what I'm in, business in other academies. So they learn a little from each one. And then, from what they're most interested to, as well as aptitude tests that we have to take, we pick what we want to do going into high school. Of course, there are alternatives. If you wanted to do multiple, you can pick, but you'd have to set that up with your counselor. So there's a lot of different opportunities that are given to students. And the teachers in freshman seminar make sure that the students are aware of that. The third one is opportunity. You guys heard of Shark Tank or Orca Tank? So, Orca Tank was a really fun activity for me, but it also kickstarted my internship experience. So having community partners like Kevin Shudy, I introduced myself to him after Shark Tank. And I established that relationship, which granted me an opportunity to work as an intern at the Mason EDC. This opportunity led me to create a great connection with our CTE office so that I can include Mr. Ramos, Mr. Tyler Ramos. And I also kickstarted my relationship with our community partners and getting other internships. I just did an internship at the auditor's office, and that was a very gay experience. It also affirmed my interest in legal work, so that was a really good experience. The fourth is the growth of the program. So every year, one thing I always hear is, you guys did that? Because the opportunities grow and grow and activities just get better, in my opinion. I know I am a little bit jealous of this year's freshmen is because they got a lot of cool fairs or expos that they get to participate in. I know I was a student volunteer for some of them, helping the Natural Resources Academy with explaining macro invertebrates. That was a really fun experience. So yeah, it's really cool seeing community partners coming in for those fairs as well. I know I talked to Sierra Pacific while they were there for the natural resources. And getting to know them was really cool. And I think I have an internship set up for January. And those are just some things. Overall, the experience was very cool. It was very fresh. It was very social, so a lot of the students interacted with each other. It wasn't some boring class where you just sat down, had to take a lot of information. It was a lot of you just getting to do what you want to do, to see what your interests are, and growing as a student and a human being. So yeah, thank you.
Any questions?
I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Oh, you will. Anybody?
Excellent work on increasing your attendance numbers. That ten percent number, that was, that's pretty appalling. So to quadruple that in just a few months, that's seriously impressive. So great work on that effort. That's fantastic. Something I just caught on one of the slides, you mentioned high cap. I didn't even know we had a high cap in high school level. What does that look like for us at Shelton High?
I would capture it as like our gifted program. And so, those students are, they have access to some different resources, higher level classes, some more challenging classes. And so, it's just really making sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students, whether they have IEPs, 504s, or they're gifted and talented.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate all of you coming and sharing that. I appreciate your passion for freshmen. That is a big transition. And to invest so much there, I think why I shared the data, if you can get your credits that freshman year, your graduation rate just skyrockets. And so, I appreciate that. And appreciate you sharing so articulately, giving us an inside view from a student's perspective. That was really helpful. With attendance, those numbers are pretty tough numbers that you're coming up from. What is, I'm sure there's more than one obstacle, but what are those obstacles? What are you up against as you try and increase that attendance in this community?
Well, I mean, like anything else, it's multifaceted. I think that geographically provides some challenges. It's a big district, square mileage wise. There's flooding taking place in the Skunk Valley. I saw a Facebook post where you had to go rescue somebody. And so, physically getting to school sometimes, depending on the weather, is a challenge. I think since COVID, there's been a little bit of malaise or apathy on the importance of attendance. And that has played a part, I think. And I, but I really think that it comes down to creating an environment where kids feel like they're welcome, they're invited, they're contributing, and making sure all of our classrooms provide that atmosphere to where it's not cool not to be in class. Like, sometimes kids think it's cool not to go to class. We're trying to make it cool to go to class. And so, hence the efforts in our PBIS efforts and the work of Brandy and her team with the PBIS team, trying to create that school-wide culture of wanting to be in class. And we're doing a lot of work with our leadership class right now. Our leadership kids have some really great ideas on how to, you know, you can target specifically attendance, and you can walk kids to class or whatever you need to do. But creating the culture is gonna go miles further. And so, that's what we're currently trying to do with our leadership class to start, is getting students involved and getting students to affect students and their attendance.
Appreciate that. One more question. We got to put in place a cell phone policy this year, which is a new thing for some of your sophomores, juniors. I hear the seniors. How's that gone realistically? Have you seen, you know, rewards from that investment of a new policy?
Well, I mean, like, I like to say morale is always highest in the general's tent. So I think it's going great. But I will tell you that at the beginning of the year, I was getting about fourteen thousand steps a day going out and retrieving phones. And now, I'm down to about eight thousand steps. So I've cut the number of my steps. I'm still getting my ten thousand, but I'm not getting them chasing phones. But really, the number of, we have very few students that have. So, we work with them, one and two, like first offense, say, give me your phone, pick it up at the end of the day. Second offense, get your phone. Parent can come in and get it. Third offense, we need to sit down. We've had very few of those. You know, there were some students at the beginning of the year like, oh, let's see if this is really gonna last. And I've had students tell me, like, I didn't think you were gonna be this serious about it. Like, we are serious about it. We're serious about eliminating the distraction of cell phones. And so, all of us, we have on our phones, we have an app we use where our teachers can alert us if they have an issue with a phone. All of us get it on our text messages and our emails. As soon as we get it, we respond to it. Because students need to see that somebody is responding as soon as possible. If I respond an hour later, it doesn't carry the effect as if I respond right now. And then everybody else sees the principal walk in the classroom or the assistant principal, and that has a little bit of effect on students also. But we've significantly spent less time on it now than we did at the beginning of the year, of course.
Thank you. I just appreciate. I know that is effort and extra effort, but I really appreciate that.
All of us are committed. Our teachers and all of us are committed to it.
Thank you for sharing and bringing some of your team with you. I'm really appreciative of the data that you've been looking into and that extra level that you've been digging into it. And really appreciative to the staff who are willing to engage and reach out to students during their hours and help bring those absent students back into the classroom. These strategies seem really effective so far this year, and I'm really encouraged by them. And I hope that everybody can keep being encouraged by them and keep engaging and want to continue. One of the things that you had mentioned was that you have school-wide structured routines. And I like to get sort of that snapshot of the classroom as students are moving around. And can I get an example of one of those?
Yeah, so we really have three or four, what would I call, school-wide commitments. One is that our cellphone policy, our electronics policy, it is posted in every classroom. It's posted in hallways. It's posted, you know, anywhere you walk on campus, it's posted. And teachers go over it. They teach and they reteach it. In fact, we just met with staff today after school about, this is a good time to reteach structures and routines because we start a new trimester. In three, in a couple of weeks, we have winter break coming up, so we need to reteach when we get back in January. So our electronic policy is one. Our makeup work protocol, so how do kids get makeup work, that's posted in every classroom. And it can vary from class to class depending on the class. Because what makeup work looks like in a CTE or a, you know, like an electronics class or a welding class might look different than in an ELA class. So what our departments have done, most of them have come up with a department policy, and that's posted in every classroom. Again, it's taught and re-taught. And then, our hall pass. So we use an electronic hall pass system. And so, that procedure is posted in every classroom. So that's consistent across the school. Kids don't have to guess, hey, how do I get a bathroom pass? Or how do I go see my counselor? Or how do I travel during advisory class to get help? That is posted in every classroom on how to access the pass system and what the expectations are for that.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Outstanding focus on the freshmen and everything. And the people standing behind you right now are proof of concept in excellent ways. You know, it trickles down from leadership to teachers to the student is obviously picking something up. I go back to the head coach I worked for used to pound into the rest of the coaches. They can know no other way. And when you start with a freshman, that really gets into that. You know, that is where they get, they learn it. Those are the attitudes and the exercises that they do every day. And it sounds like it's going great. One of the questions that I do have for you is, in our ever-changing world, I listened to a handful of things that were said, and they take me back to the, how are you managing the growth of your staff in a world that is changing so fast? They mentioned really quickly that they taught somebody not to put the entire email in their header, and I still put two spaces after a period when I type. How are you getting the staff bot in? You know, I live by the see it, do it, teach it model. How are you conveying that?
Well, I think that Jordan has a lot to do with that. Jordan kind of coordinates our PD program and the professional development we provide our staff. And we really tried to listen to our staff. So we did some surveys last year and tried to really ask our staff, like, what do they need? And like, what are their roadblocks? What are the challenges they're facing? And then, how can we build professional development around that to help support our staff? Feedback from our staff after our High Climber U this year was very positive. They felt like it was one of the first times that they really were heard and listened to. And I think that went a long ways to developing these school-wide commitments that we have in place and getting people to follow up on them. Because it's one thing to say, hey, this is what we're gonna do. It's another thing to get seventy-six teachers, twenty support staff, you know, twelve secretaries to do it. And so, I think just getting them, getting their input and finding out what they really need, and then involving them in the development and the delivery of it.
Outstanding stuff. I am ever impressed with the growth of the students as well as the staff on the high school campus. So hats off to you, sir. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions?
What was the date for that Shark Tank event coming in January? Or Orca Tank?
Third week of January. Third week. It'll be the end of the third week of January.
Is it possible to throw that reminder maybe out to somebody to get that to us?
Yeah, yeah, we will get that. And I would invite you, like, to come out when we do have our experience. It is really interesting to see the students involved with our community partners. Like, a lot of times, we kind of doubt sometimes the capability of our students, but when you let them go, they're really capable. And they make everybody really proud, and they're very good representatives of our school community.
Well, I will tell you, after listening to your student that you brought here today, there is no reason to doubt the capabilities of your students. So thank you.
Yeah. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Back to Clinton Sherman for the budget update.
Good evening again. A quick budget update. We're updating this slide every month as all the expenses come in, revenues come in. Like we talked about, we're gonna track with multiple lines. So the dashed lines will stay there, and a solid line will start appearing. So we are outperforming our fund balance currently. We thought it would be around ten thousand dollars. We're at eight ninety-four. A lot of that is some of the reductions for expenses that we've done. One of the things, so we're still on track to end our year with a positive fund balance, of course. It's super early. One of the things that we've realized after four months, December will come up here and we'll have enrollment, which, can you do that for me? It's not working great. Which I don't have today, but I will next week. And so, our enrollment numbers are lower than what we conservatively budgeted for for the year. So what that means is, can you go back? Thanks. Is that I'm gonna re-forecast those dotted lines because that means our revenues will drop a little, which means that our overall fund balance will drop a little as well. But if you remember, we ended our year outperforming by four hundred thousand dollars. So we do have that cushion there. So this will get updated at the next meeting. But where we're currently at, we ended October with a fund balance of eight hundred ninety-four thousand. November's will get calculated once we get the county treasurer's report, which happens this week. And you'll see that at the next board meeting. So we're still on track. We're still doing all the same mechanisms and following the plan, reducing expenditures, trying to forecast out our revenue. We did receive our apportionment advance in November. We've been really pushing on paying local vendors and getting caught up from outstanding invoices. And that'll continue throughout the year. What questions do you have for me?
Not questions, but just wanted to go back to, we're on track.
Yes, yes, we're on track. We are going to adjust based on what happened in enrollment. We're also looking at other ways to generate more student FTE, and so we'll bring those to you when we're ready.
Appreciate that. And then you mentioned something that I want to highlight, because there's been a question before from the public. We are working on paying all of our vendors on time, paying back anything that we've been, we're catching all of that up first.
Yeah, I don't want to name them. We have some pretty big successes getting caught up that have been outstanding for quite some time, and we'll continue that. I have this big checklist, and it's on a board, and we cross them off and do a little high five and move on to the next one, move on to the next one, celebrate as we go along.
Yeah, I just want to highlight and celebrate those things, so.
Yeah, no.
Thank you.
If anyone has any questions, feel free to call as always.
I don't have any. So, thank you. Okay, on to this consent agenda. Has everybody had a chance to look at that? Oh, student reps. I checked it off too fast, so I'm sorry. All right, we'll start off with Alan from Cedar.
I've got one quick announcement, quick announcement right before I get into the rest of this stuff, before I forget this. Envirothon, we finally have our competing dates. The regional competition will be on April 23, 2026. They haven't, they say the location to be decided, but it's always been at Skowalkson Park in Olympia, so we're going to go out there and represent Mason County. And when we win, we'll go to state competition, May 20th to 21st, all the way in Okanagan, Washington. Hope I said that right. Yeah, close enough. So yeah, so we had a lot of our Cedar students go to the trip to Evergreen last week, and we went there to go complete our FAFSA, get some more information. We were able to talk a lot more about, like, stuff about the Shelton Promise and all that. And it was really fun. A lot of the students were able to speak to students who are studying fields that they're interested in. I know I was able to also. And it was just really fun to do, it was a really fun experience. Our psychology class has been working on building brain models, so we're going to start researching how the brain works and how it affects the mind and all that. Our human anatomy class has been continuing their project on building prosthetics, and we had the prostheticist come in today to help our students design their prosthetics, giving them a professional perspective. So that was very fun. Cedar High School will also be, as a part of ASB, we're going to be hosting a clothing drive at Cedar where we're asking for donations of clothing to be dropped off at the office anytime from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And those will be, those are collected so that they can be processed and be given out at the Choice Winter Festival, just as a way to sort of try to give back to the community. And speaking of that, Cedar High School will be working on the Santa Room in Choice High School. And yeah, it's going to be a great time, so we're going to be glad to see you all there. And Senior Club has been planning a community event that will be happening in late December. So stay on the lookout.
And don't worry about how you mispronounced Okanagan. They can't say luluwop to hooey or tohola, so it's okay. Abigail, Choice.
I'm Abigail from Choice. Pathway students went bowling. They made 300 Christmas cards for veterans and for homes. The middle school class is learning about dinosaurs and making 3D models. They are learning about the Nasqually Bridge and how it's unhealthy. Choice students have been decorating doors and classrooms for the winter program that has been around for 20-plus years. It's going to be on December 18 from 5:30 to 7:30 for all of you to go. Eighty students are meeting their SIP goals, and 31 students are getting a 3.0 GPA or better. Open Doors students have been taking a community-based approach in their work in Students, Families Resource Center.
Very good. Thank you. Now, on to the consent agenda. Has everybody had a chance to look at that? Oh, that's right. Okay. The guy, yeah. You'll have to say your name again. We got a substitute for Shelton High School.
My name is Lola Hernandez, and I am the SHS ASB treasurer, and I am a stand-in for Nevia Betch. So starting our report, our sports season is just kicking off, so classes and clubs are doing winter fundraising and basketball concessions. We have a gingerbread competition that is open to everyone in our school, and leadership is partaking in it. Our senior pictures are due the 11th, as well as their quotes. We put out a lot of warnings out there, so make sure they get their deadline. And senior sweatshirts are for sale. Talking about freshman seminar, freshman seminar are doing Health Science Academy Expo next week. For our sports, we have more sports representation in the Mini Dome. I think we have a wrestling Hall of Fame now, and we are working on recognizing our student athletes. Our social media campaign to pass the levy is in the works with leadership. We understand the importance of making sure our student voices are heard, especially when it comes to the levy, and so we are working hard towards that. Our job internships have been kicked off. A lot of students are going to internships, which could be the EDC or the ELC and a lot others. Our girls' basketball is leaving for Alaska on the 17th for their basketball tournament. And finally, Cedar wants to meet with SHS, our inter-high rep, and so we can establish a good relationship. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I've totally lost control here. Okay. Before we move on to the consent agenda, have I missed anything else? All right. Consent agenda. Has everybody had a chance to look at it?
Yes. I would take a motion. I motion we adopt the consent agenda.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. On to item number eight. The proposed resolution 25-10, adoption of the 2025-26 Capital Projects Fund Budget Extension. Mr. Sherman.
Yes, this is the action item from the public hearing that happened earlier in the meeting. And again, we forecast out our budget in the spring. We had the flood and the insurance check came to us, and it can go either way. Sometimes the insurance can pay directly or schools just can. We asked them to do it, we still got the check, so it's flowing through us. So we need to increase our expenditures by half a million dollars. And that's really it.
Any questions? I have one. Why was the preference to get the check instead of have the insurance paid directly to the?
No, the preference is, all the other checks were paid directly, and then the large one they wanted, because it was so large, they wanted us to verify the work. So we came through and did a walkthrough, and that's really why it came to us. Because we asked a question, because I said, "Hey, actually, if I have, if I take this check, I have to go to the board and do a budget extension, but if you pay them directly, I don't have to do that." And they said, "Well, we would like you to do it." I said, "Sure, no problem." It's just a meeting and discussion, and it's important enough that we should talk about it anyway.
Right, because the in and out is now subject to the state audit and blah blah blah.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay.
We have all the backup documentation for that and photos and everything.
Right. Any other questions? I would take a motion.
Having heard no public concerns, I motion we pass the proposed resolution number 2510, adopting the 2025-26 Capital Projects Fund Budget Extension.
And I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, passes.
Thank you.
Moving on to board member comments. Mr. Wilford.
Well, Christmas time is upon us, and we're in Christmastown, USA, and downtown looks amazing right now. Pardon me. If you haven't driven down railroad tonight, I highly recommend it. Festival of the Furs has put on a whole lot of community events for everybody to get involved with. I believe there's one at OBJ this Saturday. Take a look at that and then get out and enjoy some time with your family and friends and your neighbors. And enjoy the long break. We'll see you in January.
Director Dale.
Yeah, I'll echo that. I got to be down on Friday night at the community tree lighting, and there were students from this community down there singing their hearts out, and it stopped raining for a few minutes. There were a lot of our students in the parade the next day. It did not stop raining for that, unfortunately. But it's really great to see the community involvement here. And I want to echo just one more time, SHS, I appreciate the report and the effort and all of the different moving pieces of what it is to teach in 2025. And to see that improvement is fantastic. I appreciate the teachers. I know how much it takes, and then to add on calling home, but to pull students back in is valuable. So appreciate that effort. And we kicked off winter sports, so there's a lot to go watch. Get out there and watch a couple of games somewhere. That's all.
Director Gilmore.
Thank you, everyone who's here with us tonight. And it's always really great to hear the school improvement plans and the great work that our families, our teachers and other staff in our buildings are doing. I can't believe we're already rolling through Christmas. We had a really exciting sport and sports season, really great reports from all of our students this last little bit of the school year, and looking forward to that big final rush into the end of the year.
All right, this will be our last meeting for 2025, so let's just get another year going the way we finished this one. It's all good stuff. The, one of our thanks again to the community for putting everything on the Mountain View Giving Tree. I noticed outside here, we've got the science kits, so hang on to your hats, Mountain View kids, that's all good stuff coming. You'll enjoy every one of those. The clothing drive at Cedar, don't forget, and also around town, Toys for Tots coming up. And with everything that we talked about with attendance and all that attendance means, we're coming up on resolution time, boys and girls. Let's see if we can get everybody doing 100% attendance on their New Year's resolutions. That'd be huge. Throw a little reading in with that, and we're going to have some real success. I don't have anything else, so with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
I motion we adjourn.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. It's 7:02.